I'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting this April the 22nd, 2021. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order. We'll begin with our invocation. We'd like to invite Pastor Michael Chandler up, pastor of the Celebration Community Church here at the St. Cloud campus, to please go forward. Could we all stand together? Please remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Gracious Lord Jesus, we thank you for bringing us to this time and this place to participate in your creation in this way. You created this earth, and our town is certainly not outside the realm of your domain, so we acknowledge and welcome your presence tonight in your place. And in your word, you tell us that you set the borders of the nations and determine the periods of time that each may hold, and we trust it is the same with cities. You made this place for us to enjoy, and you have allowed us to be stewards of the portion of your creation, so thank you for that responsibility. We ask that you would help us and strengthen us and convict us to bear that responsibility well. We lift up our civil servants tonight, asking for your protection, for our first responders. We ask for your guidance for the council as they lead us. We ask that you stir within each of us, present and joining online, a desire for the common good, and as we express those passions, help us to disagree amicably, help us to debate charitably, help us to honor you in the way we conduct ourselves, setting an example for the next generation to come after us as they rise to take stewardship in their time, and help us to serve our community well and share in the portion you've entrusted to each of us. Thank you, God, for our town. Help us to use this time well when we pray these things in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Chandler. Please join me if we pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
I'm here.
Councilmember Askew?
The first item on our agenda is a presentation to the St. Cloud Community Pantry, and I'd like to invite all of the council members down front, please, and Mr. Andre Anderson. We'll say a few words.
Very few.
We have a representative from the food bank, too, if they'll come forward.
Oh, okay.
Oh, she's here in the chair.
Yeah. Very good.
Oh, it's Rachel.
Oh, okay, very good. Good afternoon, I'm Andre Anderson, Community Development Director, and it gives me pleasure to present this check to the Community Food Pantry for City St. Cloud. I just want to talk a little bit about the program that's causing this funding, and the mission of CDBG, which is a Community Development Block grant, is to promote the development of viable urban communities by providing for decent housing, viable urban communities, and sustainable environments, and expanded economic opportunities for the residents. Nationally, the CDBG reaches about 7,200 urban and rural communities across the nation. And for us, it has to do with being an entitlement city, and back in 2018, the city of St. Cloud accepted the Metropolitan City Status from Housing Urban Development, which we now refer to as HUD. And today, the city has received funding allocations since 2019, and back in 2020, we also received additional funding because of COVID-19, ones that onset started, and that was part of what was called the CARES Act, and that's precisely the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Sustainability Act. The focus of CDBG programs, of course, is to address national goals and objectives related to low and moderate income households, and it involves various strategies such as homeownership, housing construction, public services, social services, infrastructure, rental housing, housing rehab, and employment, and that's just a few of the things that HUD CDBG programs address. The activities of the St. Cloud Community Pantry falls within the Public Services Strategy category, and therefore, this funding that we're providing to them tonight is eligible for that purpose. And consistent with their mission, which is to provide food to local residents to reduce hunger, the CDBG program would also benefit by providing needed funding for this worthy cause. We are very pleased to present to you tonight a check in the amount of $20,000. It's my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
I'm without a mask, and I apologize. I didn't notice.
It's okay. I'm wearing a Star Wars, so.
Let's move on over to another one.
I've been shot. I got shots. I'm all vaccinated.
There we go.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I appreciate this.
Thank you.
We'll send you a good one, too.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for coming.
Can I keep this one? Tam, will you be able to?
Talk to that lady back there about keeping it. Talk to the lady back there.
We were busy with the paper.
Yeah.
Of course, she wasn't here.
That's the thing. Keep that.
Don't put me in DM.
No. I'm not fit.
Do electronic deposit.
At this time, we have a presentation by the Transition House. We'll recognize Director Melissa Lucas, and I think she has two other guests with her, Ron and your guest, Blake Scott, right?
Yes.
If you'll introduce your guests, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. I have here with me Scott Wheeler, who is the Clinical Director of our residential program here in St. Cloud, and also Ron Gray, who is our vocational trainer. My name is Melissa Lucas. I am the Chief Executive Officer at the Transition House, Inc. If you don't know who we are, we're a 501(c)(3) program that started here in St. Cloud, right up the road on 12th Street. In 1993, our founder retired last year, and I took his spot at the helm. Here in St. Cloud, what we have is an 80-bed residential. It's an all-male facility. We house there our veterans program, where we use a strength-based empowerment model to help our veterans regain independence, self-sufficiency, self-esteem, as you're very aware, I'm sure. Last year, you guys voted to redirect some money that was earmarked for community vision, and you directed it to us at Transition House to assist with the veterans. So we're here to say thank you and report a little back on what we've been doing with that money, how it has started to assist the veterans in our residential program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott Wheeler, who is the Director of that St. Cloud residential program. We also have a certificate of appreciation here for the city of St. Cloud, as well as you all have individual ones that are turned over at your stations, just to say thank you for redirecting that money and that funding, because it really goes a long way in helping our veterans get kind of a leg up in their re-establishing their independence.
We won't make you walk, but if you all can stand up there next to the mayor, I will. And by the way, each of you have an individual plaque in front of you. With our thanks.
Give my mask on again. What's that?
Or he can just sign you guys.
You want to hand those up there?
Of course, all the council is smiling, right?
They're all smiling at your masks.
So hello, my name is Scott, and our organization, there's some pictures that are going to be going around. We have been working really hard on building new relationships within our community partners, and as you can see from the pictures, once they start going around, we were able to show our appreciation by presenting certificates and pizza to the St. Cloud Police Department, the fire station, and as you saw in the first one, the St. Cloud ER. We often have to ask for their assistance, and we're truly grateful for them and their service that they provide to us. You'll also see a picture where we were able to help a veteran receive a car, and there's also a picture of a veteran who is starting right here. He's starting to work at Ameritrail through your help with a donation and stuff that's made that possible for him.
This is Tom.
Oh, yeah.
Who's one of our local.
Get to the mic, please.
This is Tom and one of our case managers, Lynette, and Tom is a veteran who's now under our care, covering, and so on, getting all the services that he need. He actually was very, he was floundering because he had no care, no health care, and through, with Lynette through Transition House, he's getting to the VA, getting the services he needs, Meals on Wheels, which came through Osceola Council on Aging. So, and we actually, we celebrated his birthday. He's 66 years young. Part of what we also do is that not only do we house them and do the therapy, but we also do the employment. And this happens to be Bob Harris, who's with Ameritrail, a local establishment here in St. Cloud, manufacturing facility, and currently, we have 17 clients from our Kissimmee Work Release Center, 10 from our residential center working there, and three of them, which are veterans. So these men who had no, basically no opportunities for work, maybe, and so on, and now these are good sustainable incomes for them, and Ameritrail really likes having them there because, number one, is they're dependable, and they show up to work. So anyhow, I want to give Ameritrail a kudo. They're a big, big community partner. You've got to be thankful you've got people like that. This here was, we had a graduation, and we have some men who've gone through Valencia College. This was one of them, Moses, and he graduated from the Construction Trade Program. And at Valencia, right now, we've had six individuals enrolled in the programs, and guess what? Former veterans. So getting re-education, retraining, and rebranding, so anyhow. We also did, we can make them work ready, but they have to have clothing. So obviously, because of that, we've taken some of those dollars that you invested. This is, we went over to Walmart, got them boots, dungarees, everything they know, and we still do that on an ongoing basis so that these men can go to work and learn, have a skill. This is them at Walmart, trying on shoes. There's the mayor, and that's Mike Kemner from Valencia. That's Jimmy. He's the one that was recipient of the car, and he's working now for a company in Orlando, being able to get back and forth, so. And he went through the heavy equipment program. That's it. Oh, we also have a company by the name of Moss Solar. I don't know if you're familiar with them or not, a big, high-tech solar company, and they had a project here in Harmony. They've got six new sites being put together here in Florida and so on, and from that, we had three men from the residential, 23 from the Work Release Center, and three of those were veterans working at those positions that were paying $16 to $18 an hour, which is pretty good for that. So anyhow, we want to thank the community for your support and what you've done, and looking forward to a great and happy future for all of you. Be well, be encouraged.
Well, you know, you guys do an amazing job. You just don't help people in the struggling, you know, you don't give a hand out, you give a hand up, and so we thank you for the incredible difference that you guys are making, and we're glad that we can be just a small part of what you're doing. I think Councilmember Matheny would like to speak.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Lucas, I didn't recognize you with the masks. It's so hard, I was just saying, it's so hard to recognize people when they all have the mask on, but, so myself and the city manager had a meeting with her, gosh, about a year ago or so, and because I wanted an opportunity to get reintroduced to the Transition House and find out all the wonderful programming, and so that's when I had suggested trying to transition the dollars from the community vision over to the Transition House, and so I'm so glad that we were able to do that in the budget, and I'm just so happy to hear all the wonderful things that you guys have been able to do.
Thank you. Thank you.
You guys are making a difference. Thank you so much for the plaques, and we certainly love seeing the lives that you're touching and making a difference with. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a presentation by the Economic Development Division of the city regarding our Quarterly Economic Development Report. Ms. Antranet Forbes.
Good mo, evening. It's been a long day. Sorry. Good evening. Antranet Forbes, Economic Development Manager, City of St. Cloud. My intention is to provide you a quarterly update of what's going on as far as economic activity for the city of St. Cloud. So this reflects the period of January through March 2001. So during this period, we had 178 new business registrations. You'll see from the pie chart, hopefully you can tell, that the majority of the registrations were service and retail-oriented, which is consistent amongst our VTR registrations. In January, we had 40, and February, we had 67, and in March, we had 71. So you'll see there's a slow but steady rise of VTR registrations, which is a good thing. Oh, there we go. So as always, I try to separate the business retention from the business attraction efforts, so we'll start with the business retention. You'll see that St. Cloud is definitely making some headway, both in the area of expansion as well as retention. So I'll start from the bottom. That shows our Business First Initiative Report. That is our second annual report that we publish that gives a snapshot of the business owner's perception of business in St. Cloud. That covers everything from educated workforce and training and on-the-job training possibilities to also projected sales growth for the upcoming year. It talked about how they do their current marketing initiatives. It also questioned whether they intended to have a turnover in their upper management. That helps us from a staff level be able to set up better communication with businesses as they grow so that we can make sure they stay in St. Cloud. Our Growth Wheel Program is what we started during COVID as part of the Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan, and that was a technical assistance program that we partnered with City of Kissimmee and with the UCF incubator in order to provide technical assistance or consulting to businesses to help them pivot during COVID so that they can have business sustainability. To date, we have three businesses that are participating in it, and we're still accepting applications. It's a six-month free training program, and the intention is to use the data that we extrapolate from those businesses to apply for a federal grant so it can be offered regionally. And then lastly, one of our local St. Cloud businesses were mentioned in the Osceola Business Journal, Equity Solar. They were listed as one of the top 25 Orlando firms that were growing, but they were growing at a rate of 634% since last year. I also wanted to make a note in reference to jobs, because we cannot mention economic development without mentioning jobs. So this stat that I'm about to give you, the statistic, is from Q4 data that I received from Career Source, but from 2015 to 2020, jobs increased 19% in the five St. Cloud zip codes, so from 14,934 to 17,755. That change represents, excuse me, that change outpaced the national growth rate of 6.2 by 12.7%. So from St. Cloud's perspective, we are steadily growing. Also under business retention is our monthly newsletter. We have two. We have a newsletter that's geared for our local businesses, and that goes out monthly, and then we have the other one, which is for business attraction that goes out quarterly. So that monthly newsletter at this point has almost 3,000 contacts that we reach at a 25% open rate. We also have sent out special alert messages as applicable. For example, the SBA now has a slew of grants that are coming out, one for the Shuttered Venue Grant, the other one is the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, so we try to get that information out timely so that businesses have the opportunity to participate. We also partnered with the SBA as part of our Strategic Alliance memorandum that says that we're now going to have produce quarterly webinars, and so our last webinar was on exportation, because the Business Initiative Report said that the majority of our St. Cloud businesses do not export, and so we partnered with Enterprise Florida, the Central Florida International Trade Office, there's like two acronyms that I'm forgetting, but about four different resource providers that specialize in exportation and offer some form of free or low-cost service and grants to help businesses start exporting. We had 40 businesses that participated in that webinar. We also met with the Florida Reserve, excuse me, the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta. They were curious on business activity in St. Cloud, and so we were able to provide them an update of all the things that we were doing during and post-COVID. Now, in reference to our COVID Economic Recovery Stimulus Plan, which is still ongoing, to date, we have reviewed 148 applications internally, and we have awarded 72 grants. 62 of them are small business, 10 of them are nonprofit. We have dispersed $318,975,000, and we have helped retain 438 jobs. Under the CDBGCV Business Grant Program, which is what Community Development Director Andre Anderson was mentioning, we have also taken on the pre-vetting and post-award process. So to date, we have received 21 applications and one Sidewalk Cafe furniture grant. But we're not the only one that's out there giving out money. So this data is not as timely as I'd like, but it's the most current that I can get. Under the Payment Protection Plan, there has been 761 companies that received some form of funding. Let me also say that 71 of those companies have received more than $150,000. They have reported 5,403 jobs, and they have awarded a little over $38.5 million. Under the Osceola County Emergency Economic Recovery Relief Grant, that one closed at the end of last month, they have reported 71 companies. Let me also mention that that PPP data is as of August of last year. The county data is as of November of last year. Again, this is as accurate as I can get. Now we're on to business attraction. So under business attraction, the hotel feasibility study is winding down. They presented their preliminary findings to the Economic Development Advisory Committee last night, and they are tentatively scheduled to make a presentation to the CRA Board at the June 3rd meeting. At that point, they should have their final recommendation. Along with the strategic site inventory in conjunction with OUC, now that we are at the final stage of the hotel feasibility study, they can also assess and combine their data in order to give us a more advantageous marketing plan. We also, under the CRA, were successful in adopting the Special Event Grant Program. That's the one that we would award companies or individuals looking to do special events within the CRA area up to $1,000 to do supplemental, to pay for supplemental fees that are not under the Parks Grant Program, such as marketing, and as well as the adoption of the Downtown District Assistance Program, which is basically the BTR reimbursement grant. We responded to four, excuse me, five RFIs or requests for information for relocation Also, I thought it was important to mention under our business attraction, some of the businesses that have moved, relocated, or started within the last quarter. So Breeze, which I'm sure you all are familiar with, on the west or backside of the Makinson Building, 34 Fireflies, which is at 1035 Pennsylvania Avenue, which is a faith-based retail clothing store, the BCN Research Laboratories, this is their second expanded site. They're a training facility that offers microbiology and mycology courses off of Hefa, if I say that right, or Jeffa Drive. And then the Best Wine Bottle Company, they're on Hamilton Avenue. SLH is a home-based branding and marketing firm. They also are recent participants in our Growth Wheel Program. And I believe you may have met the owner, because she is also serving as the liaison to the Sister Cities Program. And then Mansour Orthodontics, obviously, is orthodontics, and they're on Brown Chapel. Coming up next, website updates. So we are finally at a place that we can begin making some updates to our website. As you know, many times, site selectors will go and get the data from your website before they even contact you, so it's important that our website is representative of very data-driven and specific to things that they are looking for when they look to relocate to St. Cloud. We also have as part of our educational webinar series with the SBA Marketing 2.0 for Small Businesses, that is on May 19th, and we have also partnered with Career Source for a summer youth internship program with the financial literacy component to it. So I think I've spoken enough. I am available for any questions if you have them.
Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Askew?
I just want to say I appreciate everything that you're doing. I love reading your monthly reports. What you're doing here has brought St. Cloud to a whole nother level.
Thank you.
This was a guessing game before, it seemed like, so what you're bringing to us is just fantastic, and just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trace?
I just want to echo those sentiments, that great job. I love all the KPIs and all the tracking of everything that you're doing, and I might be part of the reason for your open rate only being 25%. I think I have four email addresses that somehow I registered for your updates, but it's all very good.
Great.
Antranet, you're doing a great job. We appreciate your leadership, and it's such a joy to see all that you've done and all that you're going to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys are making me blush. I gotta get out of here.
That brings us to our Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form and be provided to the presiding officer prior to, as soon as is practical thereafter, the person addresses the council. When you come forward, we ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. The first person who is requested to speak is Dwayne Norman. If you'll please go forward, again, state your name again and your address, and you've got three minutes.
Dwayne Norman, 3551 Buckingham Court. Thank you, Mayor, council. Mayor, can I pass these out or give them to the projector?
Hand it to the clerk there. And if you've got something you want to pass out, just give that to her, she'll pass it around.
I have copies, but if you can project it, it's the same. So I'm here just to speak about the little. So I'm here just to speak about the Little League fields. It's come to my attention, slash been reminded about it, that we have kids as young as nine years old out there playing Little League till upwards of 10:30 at night. And as I put here, we have plenty of room at that location towards the community center to take those practice fields and make them two or three playable fields with lights and dugouts and whatnot. And over by OUC, I put the T for T-ball and the CP for Coach Pitch. So those fields also, we have room. And staff may have visited this once before, but like I said, right now, we have anywhere from 40 to 50 kids a night, as young as nine years old, playing Monday through Thursday, I think it is, upwards until 10:30 at night. Okay? So I would like to see if the city can do something about fast-tracking, you know, hopefully by next spring, if that's at all possible, so these kids don't have to go. I mean, it's been going on for years. But we are one of the largest Little Leagues in the Southeast United States. I think we have upwards of over 800 players. One, because Kissimmee doesn't have much of a Little League anymore. And so this is kind of supporting most of the county, if not all of the county. If you could flip that over for me. And my second concern is practice fields. Again, just an idea, back behind the soccer fields off of Missouri, we have some vacant land the city has there. You may have projected use for it already, I'm not sure. I haven't heard anything, but I think you could probably put a couple of practice fields in there that we could use because my son plays in the seven, eight-year-old league. We have to go to Remington to find a practice field. And I think that's just absurd with all the vacant land we have here that we have to leave the city to go practice. Chisholm Park might be an idea. I haven't seen the final plan of Chisholm Park, if there's any ball fields going in there. But if y'all could, I would appreciate your support of the youth. Very important that youth be involved. You ask any teacher in the schools, youth sports are one of the best things these kids can do. But staying out till 10:30 at night on a school night is not the best thing for them. So I appreciate anything y'all could do for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I would like to say, I played Little League when I was a kid and I don't think the fields have changed at all since I played. I mean, we really, it's pretty much the same as it was, that was like four or five years ago when I played. But anyways, so I did actually, I had talked to Mr. Norman and I also know that we, I mean, we've all kind of gone and thrown out the pitch at the beginning of the Little League season. And I know we have a really robust Little League here, which is amazing for our community and kids. And I also think team sports is a huge asset growing up, you know? Like I played team sports my whole youth. But I had a meeting, I think it was last week, with the City Manager and Commissioner Booth, and we were talking about a lot of different ideas. And Ms. Holcamp was there as well, our Parks and Market Director. We were talking about a whole bunch of different ideas and things, kind of dreaming. But one of the topics that we did discuss was, is there a way to better utilize the space in the Little League fields? And so in that conversation, we came up with, you know, moving the tree farm, you know, we have the tree farm over there, we can find another location for that. And we talked about converting that area to a quad, a quad area of fields and putting lights and things to try to help with that. Because I agree, I mean, a game at 10:30, I couldn't play a game at 10:30 at night. I'm tired way before then. So I did talk to the City Manager about it and we do have the funds available to do it. I also said, you know, I didn't want to get into a protracted, three-year process to try to come up with a plan, you know, was there a way that we could kind of fast-track this and do something to help out the Little League fields? He said that we would be able to do that. So I went and I knew Mr. Norman was coming, so I wanted to ask the other council members, is that something that you would support to give direction to Ms. Holcamp to try to better utilize the space, provide some extra fields? And it would be great if we could do it before the next season. I don't know if that's a feasible timing, but if two other of you agreed with that, we could give that as direction.
You got two.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't think there's a problem with that. It just needs, we need to know what the direction is and what it's going to cost and what the deal is until we're all informed. But I think you certainly would have the support of that.
So taking the two fields that are over on the west side, making it four?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be like partnering with OUC, seeing if they can?
Yeah, we have some different opportunities for funding, but we do have the parking wreck impact fees that are available, but we could reach out to OUC as a partner for us relating, but I leave that all to the staff to figure that out. But I would like to see if we could do it quickly and not, you know?
Bill, could you bring that back to the next meeting?
I'd like to the end of May, just to make sure we can get that, somebody over there to look at it that has that expertise.
As quickly as you can.
And just even back in the applicant sketch of fit and go.
And if there's a way too, to find another piece of property that the Little League could use for practice, I would support that as well. I don't, I mean, I assume that has support from council as well.
Yeah, not a problem.
I think it would be up to the Recreation Committee or staff to take that and work, run with it, bring back some proposals real soon, as possible.
Run quick.
Councilmember Trace, do you have anything else to add?
No, that's good. I was just going to support it.
Thank you.
Does anyone else need to request to speak during the Citizens Forum?
Hi, Linda Allen's 1841 Remembrance. First of all, I want to thank you for voting no for the gas station in Anthem Park. My comments, question is going to be in reference to a previous meeting that was held that stated that Florida statute says school needs separate access areas, access roads for their buses and for parents and stuff. And it was talked about approaching the school to create a plan, an alternate plan so that they're not using Lexington so much, which is, as you know, a big traffic problem. I'm curious if there is a timeline for the school to present this other option, because the school was built in 2007. Obviously, it's been a long time and they, all they've done is use Lexington, which is a public road. And also, is the school aware of the fact that in January of 2020, you voted to give the Neptune Development, which is coming access to Betsy Ross Road, which is used, which goes into Anthem Park community as well as is used primarily, a portion of it for buses alone? And if the school has to resort to building on new roads because of, for instance, the Neptune Development, are we as taxpayers going to have to share, pay the burden of that price for those new roads?
Mr. Enders, is this something that I keep, I see you working on? I don't think this is an issue that the city can address, but we can certainly help our finances.
Actually, I understand that the item that's under your introduction on your first public hearing, that at least part of this issue may be discussed as part of that. So if you can.
It was discussed in the past in reference to that, but then someone?
Ma'am, I'm talking about an item that's on the agenda tonight.
Right, right.
So I would, I believe, I understand that that's part of the presentation from the applicant on that.
Okay.
And there's some individuals from the school board or school district that are here to address it too. So it might be better to just wait until that item comes up and have a discussion then about that.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak during the Citizens Forum? That brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and not controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so additionally. If the staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. I believe, Mr. Sturgeon, you were, had a couple of items you were going to pull?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull Items A and F for discussion with council. And I'd like to call Public Works Director Nassim Gendor and Tony O'Lory from Osceola County to come to the podium. And while they're coming up, I want to talk about the importance of intergovernmental cooperation. And this is an example, of both these items, we've worked diligently with Osceola County to come up with this agreement that's both going to assist citizens of Osceola County and the city of St. Cloud. And thank you, council, for your leadership on these two items.
Thank you. Before Mr. Gendor comes to the podium, is there any other items on the agenda that council is wishing to address?
I want to talk through Item C.
Item C? If not, Mr. Gendor, you have the floor now.
Thank you. Nassim Gendor, Public Works Director. So Item Number A is a resolution for the City Council of, a resolution for the City Council for this, for St. Cloud to execute an inter-local agreement between the St. Cloud and also County regarding the cost sharing of the Project Development and Environment, PDNE, study of Canoe Creek Road from US 192 to Deer Creek, excuse me, Deer Run Road. The cost is up to $2 million. And what this study will do is, it will be a study to, in regards to design and construct a four-lane typical cross-section for Canoe Creek Road between those two, US 192 being the northern section and Deer Run Road being the southern section. This is the first step of a process and it will provide, so St. Cloud will provide the funding and Osceola County will provide the project management for this particular step.
Council, I have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Do you want to talk about Item F?
Mayor?
Before I do, I need to, someone in the audience wants to speak to Item A. I'm sorry, did, Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, I hit it late. I hit it late. I just had a couple of comments that I wanted to make. So I'm in full support of this item. And I know Ms. O'Lory and her team are wizards at getting money from the federal government. They've been able to get a bunch of money for a bunch of projects. I think it's a billion dollars over the next five years from multiple entities. And so they have definitely the process down pat as the steps that you need to take and follow to get, you know, pursue the funding. So, you know, the fact that they're going to do the project management on this, I think, is amazing for us because, you know, you got, it's a skill set, obviously, to manage these things and go after the funding. I did have a conversation, this is kind of a sidebar item, and I don't know when to bring it up, so I'm just going to bring it up now. But I did find out today that the county is reevaluating their mobility fees currently. And they're going to be, I think it's around October of this year that they're going to be putting them into place. So just as we're looking at our mobility fees too, I think we should try to align our schedules and try to have coordination between the consultants as we're going through our mobility fee process. Just as a side note to you guys while Ms. O'Lory is here, if you had any questions for her on that. But I would really like, I mean, I think that's the game people play between the jurisdictions, you know? They'll go to one versus the other, seeking the best fees. So I would like to see if our mobility fees could kind of, you know, follow the same process as the counties. But I think this is a, this is a great item. This one and F are great items and the partnership is only going to help everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I just, I didn't know if Ms. O'Lory or Mr. Gendor had just kind of a discussion with us about how do we get to the next steps? This is, of course, the first step in the process and a good chunk of money for us being a small city. How do we get to all the way through construction and what kind of funding partners would we be looking at through the state and fed?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and the rest of you, council. I haven't been here before, so thank you for inviting me. Tony O'Lory, I'm the Director of Transportation and Transit at Osceola County. So the interlocal agreement that is before you tonight is the first of many steps to widening a road. What is really good news with this step is that we are going to federally clear the roadway. So what that means is it sets this project up to be able to accept state monies and federal monies. So when we look at projects, not every project you want federally cleared, but this is a really good one. We've already started talking to the Florida Department of Transportation about this project. I've also started talking about, with Metro Plan. Metro Plan has informed me that they are setting up a new stream of funding for a project such as this. So projects that are getting ready to go through PDNE, that have local input, local monies being put forth for PDNE design and right-of-way, they will then start programming construction monies. So we've already started the process of talking to the partners about this project. That's the good news. The bad news is when you clear things for federal and state monies, it takes a little longer. So in terms of a PDNE for a county, we can do that within nine months. This process takes two years. And we try to speed that up, but it has to go through the state and then through FHWA, the federal government. So that's why it takes a little bit longer. We did this for Neptune Road. And before you, this month, Mayor, is we're already getting money from the federal government for Neptune Road. So our strategy is working with Neptune Road. So we don't do a lot of these projects. Neptune Road was federally cleared, we're federally clearing Old Lake Wilson, and then this is our third one. So I think that for this project, we can start looking for monies. Now, the scope says before this gets federally cleared in the PDNE, we have to have a decision and a discussion on the next phase of design and how, who's going to fund that and how much. So those conversations between the county and the city will start happening so that this project just doesn't end and put on the shelf. The federal government doesn't like that, the state doesn't like that. So when you're starting to federally clear this, these roadways, you keep moving it forward and getting in line with different federal and state sources. So I hope that, it's a long, long explanation, but I just wanted to make sure you understood.
Yeah, that's great. And then is there any, we have a federal lobbyist that we brought on last year. Is this one of those things we're going to get in his work plan? Perfect.
Yes. So for example, for Neptune Road, because it's already federally cleared, we just put it in for, there were two appropriations that came down from the federal government. We put Neptune Road ahead because the first thing they ask is, is it NEPA cleared, which is, you know, PDNE. So when you can check that box, that tells the federal government that you're already starting to move forward and adhering to all of the different requirements. So yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other question?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you for all of your help.
I have someone in the audience that wants to speak to Item A, Dwayne Norman.
Dwayne Norman, 3551 Buckingham Court, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to say thank you for getting this moving, staff and the county. Working together like this, where we sit and with all of our major arteries being county or state roads, this needs to be the beginning of it, you know? We, I mean, great relationships are forged and we need to not drop that. But thank you for y'all taking the initiative and getting this one started for sure and Neptune Road coming. With all the growth we have and with all the neighborhoods that we're incorporating into the city, grabbing those mobility fees, I think partnering with the county is a great use of those mobility fees and hopefully we reach out and this is just the beginning and while this is going on, oh, sorry, two or three more start moving because as you all know, there's more and more roads and more and more houses. So I just wanted to say thank you for taking that initiative and getting it going.
Thank you so much for your thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak to this item? Mr. Gendor, would you please?
Yes, sir. Nassim Gendor, Public Works Director. So Item Number F is a resolution for the City Council for the city of St. Cloud to execute an inter-local agreement between the city of St. Cloud and also County regarding the cost sharing of the Deer Creek and Canoe Creek traffic signal. The cost is up to $250,000. What this will do is it will design and construct a traffic signal at the three-legged intersection of Canoe Creek Road and Deer Creek. Per the County, the traffic signal was determined to be warranted and as a request by the city. And the proposed design will be for a Spanmore traffic signal.
Do we have any questions from council? Is anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? Thank you very much. Very needed, very important. Mr. Trace, would you like to speak to Item Number C?
Thank you. I'm fine with this item. It's definitely needed out there. It's just, in the future, this is for the mobile home that's going on the ranch. In the future, can we start planning some of these out to where we can put like maybe a permanent house out there and make it as part of the master plan to where we don't have, something that has a useful life that is as full as a normal house? I know we needed to get this done yesterday, so this is kind of the reason for this, but in the future, can we kind of start planning out and thinking about some of those things?
Mr. Gottlieb, do you need to speak to this?
Sure. If I could, Mayor.
Yes, both of you.
Yes, Mr. Trace, as we talked in your briefing, I think that's a great idea.
Yes, Mr. Trace, as we talked in your briefing, I think that's a great idea, you know? Sometimes staff doesn't think of those things, that's why we have a council that thinks things through sometimes, and we appreciate that, and I think we can definitely do that in the future.
Mayor, Counsel. Pete Gottlieb, Chief of Police, Public Safety Administrator. And Mr. Trace, to your point, the, the current process with the modular home out there clearly is a Band-Aid effect to, to address the immediate need. As you know, we did a similar thing with Chisholm Park, and it's worked out very effectively, and the, the operational necessity of having staff, one of our staff members actually reside out there to lock up the park, to be there 24/7, and to respond to any issues is critically important now. As we move forward, we can look at that. Clearly, there's a very detailed cost that will have to be looked at going forward, and what we certainly can look at as we move forward.
Yeah, thank you. And it's just, it's just a big investment, and I like to make, make sure that we have, have something there permanently.
I think the part of the, the need is so great that they don't need to wait a year to try and build a house permit and all of that. I assume that's, well, I know that's part of the reason that you're wanting to move forward, because we need some of that property soon.
We were, have been very successful with Chisholm Park, and the need to have, and that officer does a tremendous amount of work on a routine, daily basis, day and night, overseeing the park, making sure there's no unwanted visitors, and there are any problems at night, locking it up, maintaining the maintenance, directing parks personnel to address any maintenance problems and those type of things. So, it's a lot more than just the safety and security, it's almost a caretaker role for the park as well, and I think that's critical.
Any other questions?
Mr. Sturgeon, is there any way that we could just lease rent, maybe Harvey, and then, then turn around and build something that would be permanent, last longer?
We looked at that, Mr. Cooper, this investment in this modular home, you know, we're going to have other parks and other uses for it, so we can continue to, we can move it from location to location. For example, we will be taking Story Park and Park pretty soon, and hopefully in the next two or three years, then we can move it over there for that. So we'll be using it for multiple locations. So I think it's a good investment.
Building, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gottlieb.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturgeon. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to any other item on the consent agenda? If not, then I will entertain any further discussion from the council under our motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for the approval by Councilman Askew, a second by Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to our public hearings, item number one. Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-04, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending an ordinance which assigns zoning district to planned unit development, PUD, to Anthem Park, located east of the Florida Turnpike, west of O'Kunin Creek Road, and described further herein, providing for approval of the revision of the final master plan, providing for filing the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severity, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the continued item for Anthem Park Planning Development and revision to the final master plan. This item came before you back in March 11th, and at that meeting, the council had several concerns and questions that were raised, and made a motion to continue this item to tonight's meeting, and that was passed 5-0. Between that time and now, we were to receive the application, which we unfortunately did not receive in time, for staff review, and so this item is under review by our DRC. It does not require a DRC meeting, however, we do need to have it reviewed by staff, and as such, staff tonight does not have a recommendation on this revision. The revision that was presented or prepared by the applicant includes at least two items, which, one of which was to remove some of the units, and to add more parking, and increase the parking count to 3.94 spaces per unit. I have been in contact with the applicant, and they had submitted a letter to the city manager requesting that this item be heard tonight, and they can go into more detail about that, and to keep it on schedule so that their, this would constitute their first reading, and then they would go to the May 13th as the second and final reading of the amendment. They have, are here tonight and would like to speak, but again, staff recommendation is none, and we request that this item be continued to May 13th for the first reading. So, any questions?
Do you have any questions for? Was the applicant here?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Please step forward.
Mayor, council members, thank you for hearing me tonight. I am Fred Miller, 431 North Summerlin Avenue, Orlando, Florida, with Taylor Morrison Homes. Who is the applicant who filed the initial PD amendment and obviously PSP? We've been working with the city over the last 12 months with our initial site plan, which is supported by the level of density that is, was previously approved. We had 208 townhomes, and then obviously, as we continue to talk to public, as well as staff, as well as council, and heard the feedback, we obviously took that from 208 townhomes to 192 and made our submission. Obviously, at the last, on March 11th, there was continued discussion about increased parking ratio to four at a minimum, I believe your code's four and a half, and, and also there was obviously some discussion on the existing stacking issue along Lexington, which another resident already brought it previously. Since that meeting, we set up multiple meetings, one with the Osceola School Board, and we have a little bit more detail that we can share with, with council. And we've obviously reduced that 192 townhome count down to 186, I believe, is the final count. And we got the parking ratio up to 3.94 by reducing units and then adding, obviously, additional surface parking. I do have, I believe the school board is here to discuss about some of the solutions that we discussed at that meeting, and I'm happy to go into detail of that conversation, or obviously pull up the school board that might be able to address one of the residents' concerns, because there is obviously a plan, and we will continue to participate with the school board to try to remedy that situation the best we can, from a, from a, being a good neighbor standpoint. So with that, I open it up to any questions.
Okay.
Good evening, Joe Thacker, 17 South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee, 34741. This is the existing school site, and what I, we have tonight, Ms. Blake and Mr. Shatira here to answer any questions as well, but what I wanted to do is, is let you know that we did have a long meeting with the school district. They were very good about bringing in all of the different people that could give some ideas, it was kind of a creative session, and the one thing that I learned that I never realized is the reason for the stacking on the street is because they don't open the gate to let you into any of the loops until school is out. So they can have all the stacking in the world on the school site, but unless the gate gets opened to let the cars in, they're just on the street. So, what we discussed is on the bottom part of the bus, the parent loop, or the bus loop, is to create a section, and this is where their basketball courts are, and their, their playground. They are willing to look at a design that will allow stacking to occur on-site, but it will still be gated, so it will still be separated from the students, but it will get them off of Betsy Ross and Lexington. So while that gate would be open, they can start stacking on-site, and so this is the solution that we think, we were, we were talking about moving the bus loop to the front and that kind of thing, but it didn't take care of the stacking problem with the parents picking up the students. So the developer has agreed to start the design for that. This developer, the Anthem Park has already mitigated all of their school impacts, they did that at the very beginning. So, but they have, they've said that they would go ahead and, and start a design, and that would start that process. So, Ms. Blake, did I explain, Randy? Okay. So they're here, if you have questions, and I, I just was happy to be able to tell you that the school district has been very cooperative in figuring out a way of addressing a problem that's already there. With or without this project or Neptune Village, it's a problem that needs to be addressed, and so this was the solution to be able to do that.
Okay.
This is the example.
Please state your name.
Russell Gold, Osceola County School District. This is just the, the design, the rough design that we came up with on how to alleviate that, to allow the stacking. Obviously, we do give up a large portion of the PE area, but we feel that we can accommodate that.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Matheny?
Yeah, I do have one, if you can put that map back up. So, thank you, everyone, for getting together and talking about this issue, and, and so this happens twice a day, not just in the afternoons. So, I, what, what Ms. Thacker just mentioned was about in the afternoon, but it happens in the morning, too. So this, you're talking about solving this problem in both situations, right? Not just the afternoon?
Correct.
Okay.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Linda Allen, 1841 Remembrance Avenue. I just want to say I appreciate the fact that Fred Miller is willing to work with Anthem Park on this. I mean, it's, it's a huge problem, and I appreciate the attention that the City House also brought to this matter, so we can try and get it solved. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else wants to speak to this item? Well, then we'll have discussion under a motion by council. Councilmember Trace?
So, I guess, Ms. Thacker, you said you learned that, is that just an operational issue of there's no one physically there? You know, teachers are in their classroom, there usually one's doing the pickup and drop off, they can't physically go outside to do any of that until they're out of class?
I think it's a security issue, too.
Security?
Yeah, it's both.
Because the parking lots usually open throughout the day anyway, like the public parking lot, which is where they stack?
No.
Oh, no?
No.
So they lock the gate, like, if you were a visitor, how do you get into the?
I'll let the man answer that.
Okay. When I was in school, this school didn't exist, so.
Randy Shatira, 4735 Citrus Drive, St. Cloud. The reason for keeping the gate open is a security issue. After Parkland, there is a whole, there's actually three different laws that require us to keep people off campus until a certain time of the day. Obviously, we wouldn't have staff that could just stand out there and be a security guard. So, in this particular case, the buses come off of Neptune Road in, and they presently go through the front parking lot right in front of the building, and cars are coming off Lexington, down Betsy Ross, through that oval that you see there now. If we create this serpentine, which we will be proposing to the superintendent on Monday, that would take the cars off of, obviously, the neighborhood's road, and the buses still will be coming the other way. If we, that, where that first entrance is right there, that left turn, that would not be gated, or could be gated, but also we would not let them go past the entrance that's right there by the oval. So until we're ready to let them in, but at the same time, they could stack up there. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, it's just, whenever I look at some of this stuff, it seems like a engineering solution to an operational issue, but if, if we have laws that prohibit us from doing any, any of that operational movement, then.
Yeah, we're now, we're now restricted to having a single point of entry, as, as best we can make it, particularly for those existing schools.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion from council question? Councilmember Matheny?
I'll go. I'll, I mean, I don't know if you're ready for a motion yet, but I'll make a motion to continue this, because I would like to not have this vote or conversation until we know, like Mr. Shatira just mentioned, this is going to be offered up to the Ms. Pace, Dr. Pace. So we don't even know if, you know, the school board will accept this plan. So I do like that. I still want four and a half parking spaces, personally. In the development, we're not there yet. I know they need some changes, but I personally want the four and a half parking spaces. So my motion is to continue this until sometime that, after the school district has approved this plan.
I'll second that.
We would ask just if you're going to continue, to continue to a date certain, these are everything.
I don't know how long it takes to go to the school district.
I think they just indicated they're going to bring it back on Monday to the superintendent.
Okay. So the last meeting in May?
It'll be May 27. Ms. Thacker, would you like to speak to this?
Ms. Blake indicated that they would have an answer on Monday. I would ask, this has already been continued, they've, they have been continuing to work with everybody. I would ask that you continue it to May 13th, as staff had recommended.
I'll amend it to May 13.
Thank you. We have a second?
Yep, second.
Madam Clerk, we please call a roll.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
I would like to see more parking, too. Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to council action, item number one, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2021-072R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service agreement for Falcone and Associates, LLC, for multifamily residential development named Momentum Fish Lake, located in the unincorporated areas of Osceola County, on the south side of Parton Settlement Road, north of Neptune Road, west of Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Stroke Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Good evening, I'm Marjorie Craig, the Environmental Utilities Director. This agreement is Momentum Fish Lake, as she mentioned, and the, it's located in unincorporated Osceola County, Parton Settlement Road, it's just south of that, this is Neptune Road, and it's near to Hoakland, in the next slide, be able to see that. So this is the city limits, and the yellow or golden, and this is the development we're talking about. It's a three-story multifamily residential unit, there's 324 units, and because it's outside the city limits, we're bringing it to you for approval. It's a water and wastewater agreement. The typical agreements are crosswalks with ADA-approved surfaces at all intersections, all directions where sidewalk is present, and on-street parking shall not be permitted except in clearly marked parking spaces. We recommend approval of this water and wastewater agreement, and ask that you take action.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
I apologize, I was not prepared that this was coming up.
Please.
Yes, my name is Denise Serbono, I reside at 2397 DeTura Loop in St. Cloud, Florida, My question specific to this, since we are currently My question specific to this, since we are currently under water restrictions by the county and the city, how is this going to affect those specifically? Because I have dead grass, and I'm told that they can't even water it. And I'm in a 55-plus community that's not, that's still unincorporated in the city of St. Cloud, even though I pay my taxes here. That's my question.
Marjorie Craig again. I'm not sure if you're, are you talking about reuse, or are you talking about water?
Water, period. We're not allowed to use the reuse, we're not allowed to use the, you know, the non-potable. We are restricted, period.
So, the, I'm not sure.
If you'll just state what she stated, so that people who may be listening online understood what she was saying.
Yes. So, what she, what the resident stated was that there's, that she is under restrictions from reuse, is my understanding, so.
Or reuse, both.
Okay.
Well, really, really reuse.
Ma'am, 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 please. Okay.
It wouldn't be potable water, it would be, it would be reuse. And it is true that, as y'all know, we have a tendency to run out of reuse water during the dry season. And that's why we're going for the grant for additional storage, and we're pursuing additional storage measures. This particular project, I don't think that there is reuse there, but I'm not, I'm not sure. I'd have to come back to you and let you know about that. But the, the water portion and wastewater will not affect the irrigation at all. It won't, won't affect the reuse, at least. Won't affect, impact her from a reuse standpoint. But I'm not sure, you know, everybody is using Florida-friendly plants, and I'd have to come back on the, what reuse they're using.
Okay.
Because it's still, it's still conceptual, there's nothing good there.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We'll get with the young lady here and work with her and see what the issue is, and see if we can resolve it.
You'll see the city manager when you get through, she'll be glad to help you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's old light, sorry.
Do we have any questions or discussion from council?
Marjorie, it, Mr. Mayor, Marjorie, it looks like to me if you keep giving water unincorporated to citizens, not giving it to what's going to be into the city, coming into the city, it's running out. We're going to run out, it's coming. I keep saying that, I've been saying it. Sooner or later, it's time to fess up and figure out where we're going to stop the, here's the moat, and where we stop, that's it. And, right now, we're just giving it to everybody. It don't matter. Just give water, just, no matter what, we're going to get 125%? That's plenty of money. Well, it's not. Sooner or later, we're going to run out. Sooner or later. That's my question, thank you.
Thank you. This particular project will, we still have capacity for this project. I will, I take your comment seriously, and right now, we're still good with the developments that are within the city as well.
Mr. Manzares. Is, is this, does this request fall within the scope that if we have the capacity, we're supposed to grant it?
Yeah, this, this project is in the city's service area, and so, it is part of your utility service area as established by statute under chapter 180. So, it, you are the number-one provider for that. So, essentially, what that, you're supposed to be providing service to any property that's in there, assuming you have capacity. The process is, the developments come forward, the capacity determinations are based on the actual capacity of your plants and the, and the advance, and then the productions and planning in the future to deal with that. And the staff does take into account those project properties within the city, because we have to serve those, there's no choice. You have to serve the properties within the city. So, undeveloped properties within the city are taken into account for capacity determinations in general, so. But you do have an obligation to service your 180 area, because that's what was established.
Thank you. And according to your studies and the scientific data that you have, we do have the capacity to provide this water?
According to the information I have right now, we, we still have plenty of capacity. As I've mentioned, we are doing a study about, you know, we want to look at what's been done in the past, and what we're projecting, and what's coming in, so.
So, you couldn't give me a tally of how much is left? How many thousands of homes are, what's, right now, today? Could you tell me that?
So, if you recall, a few months ago, I did do just a very quick estimate. It was, it was a very conservative number, would be 8,000 new dwellings, so.
It ain't going to take long, it'll be gone.
But we are planning for growth as well, so it's, it's, until something changes, we're just going to continue to plan for the, for that water supply, and do everything that we can to be ready for when that gets here.
Mr. Manzares, could we actually, could the council say, okay, we're going, 8,000 gallons is left, or whatever, whatever number you come up with? It's X amount of leftover, could we put that, is going to be only what's going to be in, coming into the city viable right now?
Well, I think that's.
Could we, could we hold our ground, and if we did that?
I think that's part of the calculation that the staff does when they're determining capacity determinations outside the city. They take into account the area within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city and deal with that. And Marjorie can talk some more about that. But, but remember, the, I think we've talked about this before, there's two really, reviewing these matters, there's two really important issues you have to remember about. You have a water and sewer utility, that system, that essentially financially sustains itself based on its future growth opportunities in part. In other words, if you stagnate your utility system, eventually, those customers are going to have to pay for all the upgrades that have to happen when they need to be happened. And that might happen 20, 30 years down the road, but it's going to be a cost that has to be borne by the system. So, there's a financial sustainability piece for your system that's tied to the future growth and new customers. The second piece is, you have a, the 180 district, which I referred to early, is essentially a planning tool. And, and that means that you establish your utility service area so that your program from a financial sustainability and a growth perspective can knows the area it's going to develop, and most importantly, knows that there's no other utility service provider going to be in that area. In other words, a city like St. Cloud, knowing its area, would be hesitant to move towards expanding its utility system, putting pipes in the ground, expending resources, if it thought that another utility company, a private utility, an investor-owned utility can come in and say, no, we're going to serve that area. So, then the city spends millions of dollars to put pipes in the ground and gets no customers. And so, that's why, that's what the 180 area is created to do, so that utilities would know, this is going to be our area, this is going to be our focus point, we can plan for it from a resources, a resources perspective, and we're not basically putting a bunch of pipe in the ground and spending money that we never use. So, those are the two components to it. You could move forward, and you could reduce your 180 service area, but I would caution you not to do that until such time as you have a good feasibility, financial feasibility study on the future of your system, that would takes that into account, because you could be jeopardizing the system 25, 30 years down the road without realizing it.
How far does that make in the 180 zone that we did back in the 80s or so, when I was on the council? We did that 180 zone. How far is this property here that's going to be? How far 180 goes past that, how much?
I don't know, someone who's better at maps can figure that piece out, but the 180 area that was, I think the last time it was expanded.
105 miles or something like that?
It's five, the statute says five miles. You can draw a circle, five miles outside the boundaries of the city. Of course, the boundaries of the city have expanded since you were on council originally.
Yeah.
And then there was an expansion of the 180 area done in, I want to say 2001, maybe? 2002, and expanded then too, so. But where this falls in that category, in that circle, I don't know.
I mean, this is, you know where this, I mean, this is actually fairly close to the Toho service area, so it's not, it's not, it wouldn't be something where we'd be looking to go five miles out in that direction, so. We're not proposing that we expand the 180 service area, and we're, but right now, we're moving, you know, we're planning for serving all of that 180 service area as the growth occurs, so. I've done it, you know, my long career. So, we're just digging into how the capacity units have been done before. We believe that our per capita water use has been reduced because of, of the reuse system and the reduction in irrigation. One reason I'm so interested in expanding the reuse storage and moving away from any jumpers to the potable system. We want to need, or we'd need to maximize that reuse water. We just have a storage problem. So, we get plenty of reuse, and we have a deep injection well that we're permitting. And we tried to do an ASR well, and that formation was just too transmission, transmissive. So, it's, we can't just store it and pull it out. It would actually salt up pretty quickly. So, we're looking at regional storage ponds, we're looking at everything we can, and we think our per capita has gone down over the years. So, my conservative 8,000 units may well be much more than that. But, we'll bring that back when we've got a more firm number.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I'm trying to think how to phrase this, but I, I drive Neptune Road every day, and it is terrible right here already, like a logjam of traffic, even with the new Cross Prairie. And I think the divide between the city and TWA is shady lane in that vicinity, like, right in that road that kind of cuts through the middle. I think you're right in the, you're close to the line.
It's very close.
So, I did ask in my agenda review, how far along in the approval process is this development? And, Mr. Surgeon, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been submitted to the county, that's as far as this development has gone? So, to, for me, another 324 units, I'm just cringing at another 324 units on this road. So, I'm wondering, and that's kind of asking, I guess, the group for advice, is there a way we can reach out to the county and say, we're concerned about the density of this community, and, you know, we're providing the water? I mean, is there a way to kind of have a conversation about it? I mean, frankly, if we deny it, TWA would probably just pick it up, because it's literally right on their line, and that is not what my focus is so much with that, is more, another 324 units right here is concerning to me? And, you know, do you guys have any thoughts or suggestions on that? Can we reach out, can we continue this and have staff reach out to the county and say, hey, we're concerned about this, and?
I don't, I don't like you are, I don't, I don't feel like it feels like that, I'm not into turf war that we need to get every inch of our five-mile circle circumference, you know, if it's, if it couldn't work, and get it less density.
I mean, and to me, I have always thought it's a flawed system to say we have to keep growing to pay for what we did before, because eventually, there's an end to that, like.
It's coming.
You're not going to grow forever, and then you're going to collapse under the weight of the stuff you did before, you know, I, that, that to me is a flawed system. But, you know, I, I guess I'll just make a motion to continue this and ask staff to reach out to the county and, and, you know, try to reduce the density of this project.
I'll second that.
Mr. Manzares, can you speak, do you need to speak to this?
Well, I do, I don't know the issue with what the approval is in the county. I do know that the agreement refers to an approved PD in the county already, so, I don't. And, and that would seem to me that it, that it is pretty far along in the county. But, we certainly can get, I don't have a.
Yeah, I would, I mean, not according, not according to the data that I got in my agenda review.
I'm just reading what's in the agreement. So, I don't know if the applicant is here, so.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I.
So, they would, so, I mean, obviously, if you continue it, it's not, it's not going to be a really hard find to figure out that information before, so. So, that was what I was going to say before Ms. Matheny made her motion.
Yeah. Councilmember Askew.
Those are all great thoughts. And, and I think, coming to council a long time ago, that was sort of like, I called it the, you know, the water wars that was going on between the county and the city, and we were denying projects just because we were getting into thought, capacity issues, and things like that. I would love to sit at the table with the county and talk about density, and talk about growth, and talk about a lot of these things. I sit on the chambers board and a bunch of others, and that is the main conversation. Everywhere I go is the traffic, and, you know, how do we do this? And they ask me, and I'm like, you know, I have to approve certain things under state statutes, and I have to approve if it's under the land development code. And they're totally unaware of any of that stuff, but if, if you're okay, I would love to get with the county, or staff get with the county, and talk about some of the density and some of the, you know, the same things we're running into even today, you know, they approve a project, comes to us, we have to give it water, or we don't give it water, then we get into a little bit of a battle, so. Yeah, if we can open up that conversation, that would be fantastic, and I think a lot of our citizens would love that.
Well, I would certainly be in favor of that, as long as we can legally deny or continue. We're not denying, we're continuing requests at this point.
You can continue this one, obviously, and ask the, and obviously, if you continue with the applicant, two things will happen, well, number one, we can get information from the county to answer the questions, and see what, if there's anything that can be done about the density, if they're willing to do it. And number two, you can talk directly to the applicant and ask them if they're, you know, they control the density, even if it's been approved. So, you've had, just without going too much on a tangent, this process that was instituted a few years ago, I think maybe Mr. Askew may be the only one that was on the council at the time when we instituted this process, was designed to address direct negotiations with developers for their projects, because the county was not listening from a development perspective. So, the intent was, and it's not, it's blatantly obvious, was to put in place a process that these developers had to come to the city council, even though their project was in the county, and talk to them about the project. And the hook was, you need water and sewer from us, so you have to stand at our podium and tell us why you have a good, a good or a bad project, or explain why you do that. So, it may be, maybe not what you intended, Ms. Matheny, but since the applicant isn't here, it may be, continuance would simply give them the opportunity to come back in and see what they can do, and maybe make this project a little better for you, and deal with it, so.
Well, I like that, but I like the bigger discussion as well. I'd like to have the bigger discussion with the county, and we've only had one meeting since I've been here with the county, and board members have changed, I think.
That's one of the problems.
Potentially, and I think potentially voting directions have changed too at the county, so things that maybe didn't have support before, maybe would have support. So, I would like to open the lines of communication.
Well, that's one of the problems, that my, my concern, long-term, is contracts have consequences. We have a joint planning agreement with the county. We have a contract with the Cypress Creek project that has tremendous financial implications for us, and much of the growth that is supposed to be sustained by the amount of water we've committed ourselves to, including the Cypress Creek, is going to, is dependent on the growth. And, you know, those are contracts that you just can't walk away from, that have consequences. And I, you know, this whole water thing, I think, has got to be studied again to make sure we're on the right page, and we're all educated on this issue.
Can I speak for just a second?
Yes, please do so.
So, so, part of the, what I was looking at, just on a, just a general conceptual basis, is that our permit is 8.9 million gallons per day. So, we were able to, the CFWI, we went ahead and, and championed, we totally support the CFWI rule by DEP, but there was just some implementation issues. And so, we were able to preserve our, our allocation and still be protective of the environment, so, because we've, we've done mitigation and so forth. So, our average-day water use right now is about seven MGD. So, just even just taking that, and at the time, I was looking at the max day and the average day, because there's, there's some things that you look at. And so, that's where you start, you see that you can extend it, and our per capita water use has gone down from where it used to be 15 years ago. So, Cypress Lake, it continues to be deferred just by all of the stopper utilities because of the, you know, demand needs, and being able to reduce some of the demand. So, that, I mean, the, we've been looking at the financial sustainability and the financial health of the. So that, I mean, the, um, we've been looking at the financial sustainability and the s- uh, financial health of the utility system. And, um, we'll bring that back to you, but we, we believe that we can do it, do this. I'm, I feel confident that, and and if you change the policy and you wanna do something different, we still will be in a good situation. So, um, I, I mean, I don't see this particular, I, I understand what you're saying about the, the concern. And I've often thought, uh, Councilor Trace had talked about the pyramid scheme of being sucked into, you know, growth, 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 growth. So.
Population Ponzi scheme.
Yeah, Pon, okay, Ponzi scheme, yeah, so, sorry. So I actually think about that and what y'all just said, as I'm trying to do, or not trying, but working on plans for the future. So that we're not doing, we're not gonna rely on just, you know, but we have a certain amount of commitments already in place. We already have transmission mains, we have transmission mains planned, we already have capacity. And so those are the things that you have to balance when you start talking about reducing your, your service area and and, um, uh, and changing things. But I'm, the service area, I, I can see there might be a, a line of, you know, that, that's, that's a whole other, that's in someone else's lane. But from a utility standpoint, you know, whatever y'all wanna do, but we can, we can do this.
Mr. Surgeon.
Yes, I, I just wanna think, make sure we think through this strategically. And and you and I have had this conversation about growth, regardless of this in the city or in the county, we're gonna be impacted by it. Where our roads are impacted by county residents and city residents. Our fire services are impacted by county residents and city residents. And I will say that staff does meet on a regular basis with the county and there are some gaps there between staff's idea of density. So I would request that this council, direct me, uh, mayor, pinned by the mayor, sent to the county to request a joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and this council to have that discussion. Cause I, I agree with Councilmember Matheny that, you know, a lot of things have changed and and it's probably been three years, I think, since we've had that meeting. And and I would request that we do that, or you do that as a board, direct me to gen that letter, have the mayor sign it and ask the county manager to arrange that meeting with me.
I think we have a consensus for that.
Yep.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
All right. We have a motion for continuance.
I had, well, I, I have.
And I'm fixing to recognize you here in a second.
Yeah, I, it's a comment after that, we can vote on that.
No, go ahead.
Well, I just, this is kinda the tip of the spear of this. This is an area where there's already pipes out there and there's already stuff. Over, uh, Kissimmee Park Road, that's a big area that I don't think that, that water. Yeah, the water use, um, uh, water service agreement is there for that. Also Hickory Tree Road is a big area, like, we've gotta make these decisions, you know, now, sooner rather than later. We've got the whole discussion of where do we stop annexing as a city, providing that police and fire and park service? And then the utility service area is that whole other conversation as well.
I've been saying it for five years now.
I have been saying it.
Five years.
At least five years.
And, and I would like to say, we had a consultant come, you guys remember, and didn't provide any scenarios or useful information. And so we said, you need to come back and provide scenarios and I don't, that consultant's never come back.
That wasn't a good consult.
Mr. Surgeon.
Well, actually, if you recall, we were in COVID and we had a, um, virtual meeting. And it is on the workshop in the next couple of months to, to back and address that. And I can tell you right now, we are working on a map right now. We were looking at, you know, I think it's based, based on my background on fire protection. You know, we have a service area for water and wastewater, but I think it's gonna be based on what kind of public safety we can provide. So we're, we're designing that map right now and to make a recommendation, it's like, here's where we need to really think about growing to. Like I said, water is a separate issue and I wanna make sure we clearly delineate that as we move through this process. But I do think, I just request that we think through this strategically, cause we could impact the city for many years when we're all in retirement.
Yeah, so in my mind, this is an area that the, the lines are already there. The big conversation is down Kissimmee Park, down Hickory Tree Road. Those are the big, big areas that we need to really have that conversation.
Well, like, my, my point, sorry, Mayor, was not so much about the water. In this case, was more about the traffic.
Yeah, and if going down that, that rabbit hole of, if you look at any of the newer venus things, they, you know, they say the only way to pay for growth is density and, you know, you get the whole back and forth of, you don't, you don't really want that. So I just think, let's have that conversation with the county and see, see where their, their minds at.
Any other?
And then did we continue this to a cer- date certain?
I didn't.
Have we put a date on when we're gonna continue this too?
I didn't. Do you need a date?
I, I think it, it favors the applicant and probably, oh, they're not here and so you continue to, and.
First meeting in June?
You gonna be that ready?
We, we'll have answers to those, to the questions about whether the county, what the county would do about, you know, density issues and all that.
That was a question.
Before that, that'll, we'll have that tomorrow, we can have that by the first part of next week. I do believe, and I'm looking on the county's website right, I do believe they have the approvals they need in the county. So if you're going, on this particular project, putting aside the discussion, the bigger global discussion right now, on this particular project, if you're going to address anything from a density perspective, I believe it's probably gonna have to be between the council and the applicant about what they may or may not be willing to do.
It'd be more important to have them here.
That's what I'm saying, and they're not here now, so. But, you know, this project has been in the works, I don't know how long it is, is, is in there. So if the motion is to continue to the first meeting in June, then, then, you know, that's the motion.
Ring the bell, get them to come.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
Yes.
June tenth?
Whatever it is.
To the first council meeting in June.
Come here.
I assure you, Mr. Cooper, they will be here.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Madam Clerk, call the room.
Just for the record, that'd be June tenth meeting.
June tenth.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Benjash.
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Surgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two good news items. First off, most of you know, but I wanted to announce it publicly, that the state Senate and House has funded our seaplane base project at five hundred thousand dollars, subject to the governor's veto, so it has to go through that pen. And as you know, we were approved last year and he did veto it due to COVID nineteen. The other thing I'd like to tell you, and hopefully it'll cut down on some of the phone calls on the weekends as we started our park ranger program. We've selected a, a, a new park ranger who will have a modified schedule that covers the weekends. This person comes out of the entertainment industry from Disney and Universal and they'll be able to do customer service, make sure the parks are pristine. That'll be for the lakefront and Chisholm Park. And we'll expand that when we have success on it. So thank you, that's all I have.
Very good.
Councilwoman Matheny.
Thank you, um, along the lines of what Mr. Surgeon just said about the park ranger, I think that's great news. I think we all see and get the calls and read the complaints about the trash and bathrooms not being cleaned, whatever, whatever the situations are. So I think it's nice to have somebody there. But one of the issues that I keep getting contacted about, and I'm, I don't know if you guys do as well, is about, um, our lakefront boat ramps. And people not being courteous, I guess, with the, whatever the, the rules are for loading and unloading your boats and getting out of the way and and keeping things flowing. It's like, I keep hearing all these complaints, I don't have a boat, so I'm not down there, I don't know. But, you know, they're telling me, you know, there's etiquette to loading and unloading your boat. So I had talked to the city manager about, in addition to the park ranger, did he think there was a possibility we could hire someone to be at the lakefront like Saturdays and Sundays, just to be an ambassador at the boat ramp and helping people and telling them to like, you know, you need to move out of the way and, you know, kinda keep things moving down there. Um, I think that would go a long way to customer enjoyment of the boat ramps and utilizing the lake. And, you know, maybe some of it is just people don't know the etiquette of, you know, loading and unloading your boats. But, um, we had kinda talked about that. I don't know if the other council members have any interest in looking into that.
It does take a long time to unload boats and load them sometimes. Some are, some are very slow doing it and they get halfway pulled out and they, they just stop and get out and they wanna clean their boat right there and there.
In the way.
Before they get on 10th Street, or at the lakeshore, I'm sorry. I've seen that, yes.
So I did some research, it's called a harbor master and it would be a person that down there that kinda, it's a traffic control cop for the boat ramp and make sure people move on and things like that. So, um, again, it would be another FTE to do that. I don't know if it has to be full-time.
Why don't we give you that full-time job?
You want me to do it?
Yes, sir, you do.
I'll do it, yes, sir.
I was just thinking maybe just Saturdays and Sundays.
Could we use our, uh, crossing guard? Cause I know they're walking down there now, as it is.
Well, that, that'd be on the week, I think it's mostly on the weekends is where the struggle is.
Something to look into.
But I, if, if, I know, it sounds like Mr. Cooper's interested and maybe one more, if we could just explore the idea of having someone down there.
I really think, you know, like the park ranger could assist, but I think they'll be traveling between parks. I don't think that would be their sole responsibility. But, you know, we can look at that and especially if we, you know, started putting the seaplane infrastructure and you're gonna need a marshal down there to help marshal those planes in too, so.
You know, I just find it a little frustrating. I have a boat. And sometimes when you go on Saturdays and Sundays, it, there's a lot of people there. And most of the people, ninety-eight percent of them are cordial, they wait their turn. You know, we, you know, it is, it takes time to put in and pull out and, you know, it's only just a few people. And, uh, you know, I'm just kinda feeling a little reluctant that we need to get somebody to go down and monitor our citizens to pull in and out of the, their boats in and out. And I, I just find that, you know, I've done it hundreds of times and never had a, I've had people I got frustrated with cause they were slow. Or they were old, like some of us. Again, I just think, you know, we're looking at a park ranger thing, you know, have him evaluate. I don't have a problem with looking and evaluating it and maybe having someone go down and say, how big a problem is it? Is it a problem that we need to start putting more money into? But don't, but study it, but don't make a, you know, Sam, bring back a report or recommendation or something.
Could it be signage too?
I find it frustrating. Every time we have a problem, we gotta get.
All right, could it be just signage? Could it be at the end of the dock saying, here's the rules of pulling in and pulling out?
It sounds, I mean, from the reports that I get consistently from multiple people, it sounds like it's just a free-for-all down there. People are jumping over handrails and doing all kinds of dangerous maneuvers down there. I don't know, but that's what I'm saying, look into it. I would, I would, if, if it is a situation like I keep getting all the reports, I don't know if we send staff down there a couple of different weekends and watch it. They're saying, and then the floating dock is closed, so then that's causing a bunch of pandemonium out there. I don't know, but it sounds like.
We got a lot of jet skiers.
The jet skiers and then, you know.
A lot of jet skis.
There's a lot of stuff, but I don't think, I mean, to me, the park ranger, he's in, he's, or she, is in two different parks. Like they don't have time to be at the boat ramp.
You know, we're gonna have a big problem with jet skiers right there where the ramp is at. We got a lot of jet skiers right there parking and they're, they're eating there, they're in and out, their kids are riding and out when they're packing boats out. It's just, it's not a good mix.
So if, if you recall that, that we were doing our park, our lakefront master plan and we were trying to design it in such a way that we don't have those conflicts with the jet skiers, the boaters, the kayakers, the seaplanes. So, you know, we'll put that back on. The other thing is, is, I've talked to Councilwoman Matheny about this also. I'd like to do a, a task force and look at the whole thing. We've got issues with the storage of the boats there. I mean, I think it's time, it's sort of our growth, we just look at the whole marina and how it's structured and the fees and everything like that. We just go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that's something else that.
So.
I've been mentioning about people, like, you know, the boat marina to me is a, um, is a great amenity to the city. And it appears that, you know, are people even coming to, to their boats? Are they just using it cause it's the cheapest storage in town? So there ought to be a mechanism to be like, you have to come through with your key card once a week to your boat or you have to do something, you know, make sure that people are actually coming and, you know, and some of the boats look like they wouldn't, couldn't even go out into the water. So they need to be removed, you know, like there needs to be an assessment of the whole situation, I think.
Well, you've offered to do that, haven't you?
Yeah, I, I think that'd be appropriate. I think we should do that, put together, you know, some public meetings, ad hoc, maybe an ad hoc committee that meets a couple of times and makes recommendations. But we definitely need to address the issues down there.
Well, you have more.
Everybody has fun.
Consent us to do that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I have one last thing. I wanna give a kudos to Main Street, um, for their cloud cash program. So just for some of the details, they got five thousand dollars in a grant from Osceola County. And then they used that where basically if you came and you spent ten dollars, you got twenty dollars in, in cloud cash. So then you got, you know, you like doubled your money. And so then all of the cloud cash has, there's none available right now. And that was a ten thousand dollar total program. And they said most of the money, they, I guess they're tracking the dollars and most of them have gone into the downtown restaurants. So I think that's a great thing, especially with the struggle the restaurants are continuing to have with staffing, challenges, um, things like that. So I think that was a great out-of-the-box thinking program that in, did some infusion of funds into our downtown. That's it.
All right.
Councilwoman Cooper?
Bill, just, I understand where we're at, but what, what kinda timeframe is it, is it moved or still in the same place for the power plant?
We're still in a holding action with that. OUC is putting together their plan right now. I have a quarterly meeting with them, I think in June and as we committed to giving the, uh, council a briefing on a quarterly basis of where we're at. So nothing's changed since the last briefing you got. So quarterly, we'll be briefing you on that after a quarterly meeting.
Okay. And you and I, I've asked you about the Saint Cloud Hotel. It kinda seems like it's slowed down here a lot. Yeah, I asked you to find out from the building official what, what's, what's happening and where, where's the, where's the end game on this? And how?
So.
When's it gotta get finished up?
I did check with the building official, their permit is active. Last Thursday, I gave them a permit to pour concrete and I hope I'm saying it right. They had to pour concrete to, I wanna say strap the building together from some of the modifications they've done. It takes twenty-eight days for that to cure before they can do any more work. That's why you see limited amount of work right now. I've got a call into Albert right now to see where he, what his timeline is to complete that project.
Okay, could you give all of us a?
I will.
Whenever you get it.
I'm trying to get with, um, Albert to see what we can do, so.
Okay.
Bond beam, thank you, Naseem, he just texted me, bond beam, they're bonding the beams together. Thank you.
Yeah, they've gotta get that finished up before they can get, get their.
Correct.
Roof rafters and finish up on the roof, I understand that. You got our sound systems up and running, you're gonna be, but now we're only, you're telling me you're only gonna run it on the weekend and that's it?
Well, I, I think we needed to determine what we're gonna do that on. I, I don't know if it's appropriate to run it every day of the week. I mean.
I know Kissimmee runs their portion during the week, some.
I, I think there's times, I mean, people are gonna start, we'll have to see how it goes, cause I think people will have concerns, the type of music, how long it's playing, how late it's playing. I, I was thinking probably on the weekends and during special events would probably be a good start. And we'll try it out and we'll see what happens, but I know that my phone's gonna start ringing for one issue or another about it.
Okay. All right, and bench hill and stuff like that, you getting ready to paint that or?
That's correct.
You put it out for bid?
We have, the bids, I believe, are back and we should be getting those awarded and get that taken care of. That was for the fence, for the.
Fence painting, yes. Yeah, okay. And out there at the graveyard too.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
You're gonna paint both of them?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, that'd look a lot better. I think that's pretty much it. And we talked about the 10th Street as far as getting, well, two ends down here at the south, getting four-laned with getting the county, are you?
Well, right now, it's, Metro Plan is doing an assessment of what we're needing. They did a survey, um, about bike path, sidewalks widening, so that's out in a community survey right now and Metro Plan is funding that.
Aren't we looking about grant, grants and stuff like that too?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper, I didn't hear that.
Aren't we looking about a grant out there?
Correct, then that's what Metro Plan would help us get money to do that through FDOT.
Okay, and Vermont Avenue at 10th Street, we kinda, you and I talked about, you know, we've had a lot of wrecks right there and it's a bad blind corner when you're coming north.
Based on the crash data from the police department and the warrant, it's not, a stoplight's not warranted at that intersection at this time.
Okay. We'll keep up with it though, okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Raskin.
Um, kudos to, uh, Main Street as well. We went to the, uh, uh, movie, the twenty-two-long-minute movie. And, uh, we had our star mayor and our city manager on there and an upcoming star from Parks and Rec was fantastic. So, uh, kudos to you guys and I think they need to do more of that. It really brought a really good light and some of our history to Saint Cloud, so. That's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Trace.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Menzares for the excellent job he did on his Essex presentation, I didn't fall asleep, and I actually learned a few things I hadn't even heard before, so I was kind of shocked on a few items, I didn't, that was a kind of a revelation. So, thank you, you do a good job, excellent job, thank you. I would like to ask if, again, if I had the support of two other council members, that we also look, while we're looking at the ballfield thing, that we look at, could we possibly look at installing some pickleball courts more than we have now? I've had a lot of adults who are playing pickleball that are participating in tournaments elsewhere in other cities, and our St. Cloud teams are winning the tournaments, and what's interesting, I talked with two other mayors that have some pretty nice pickleball courts. It brings in a lot of money into their cities because these are adults that are playing, and pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in our country right now. And I'd just like them to look to see, is there a good place that we might, could build a nice pickleball, have enough courts to, lighted courts to better serve our residents, because this is a real growing area, and this is an area that I think could generate some income for our city eventually, because these, these pickleball tournaments are really growing fast right now in other cities, would that be, could I have your support in looking into that?
Yeah, you got my support, I just love the word pickleball, so.
You got, you got mine, it's confusing because they painted pickleball lines on the tennis courts.
It is.
So, it's confusing when you play tennis, like, there's got a bunch, so much lines over there.
I'm amazed at how many people are playing it now. I, I did a wedding over at Twin Lakes, and they have a whole constituency of people there that play pickleball, and there were people there that are in tournaments and so on, it was really interesting, but it's-
I thought you were going to say a pickleball wedding. But, but, but I also want to say that, you know, we're winning tournaments with no courts, and from my own personal experience, and where I practice my golf, the worse I get, so maybe if we put more courts, we might start losing.
Well, there's, there's quite a few courts here and there around, I have three at my church that are used constantly around, every day. So, I know it's a growing sport that a lot of people are playing, so, and most of them don't even come to my church, so, we're just glad to serve the community. With that, I don't have anything else, I go to the information and reports section. Thursday, May the 13th, there'll be a city council meeting, also at 6:30 here at City Hall. Thursday, May the 20th, there'll be a city council workshop at 3:00 PM here in Council Chambers. Thursday, May 27th, there'll be a city council meeting, 6:30, 8:00 PM in City Hall Chambers. I'd also like to make you aware that Monday, May the 31st, there will be a Memorial Day observance ceremony at Osceola Memory Gardens from 8:30 till 9:30. There will be a wreath laying ceremony that same day at 10:00 AM at the Mount Peace Cemetery, that's always a special time. Several proclamations have been issued, proclamation in recognition of the National Day of Prayer, recognition of the Water Safety Month, recognition of Drinking Water Week, and a proclamation in recognition of National Small Business Week. Also, for your review, is warrant list number 10. With that, I have no other items on our agenda, with that, we are adjourned.